Chat if you'd like. I have things popping up all over here. Put your name in the chat if you'd like to have public comment and and also be reminded that at this time, public comments should be limited to items that are not on the agenda. Any public comment? Any public comment?
I have public comment.
Go ahead.
I just have a question. In July of this year, the commission applied for $3.5 million for to COVID relief fund. Did the city ever get that? And if so, has the city gotten the second round of COVID relief fund? Number one, has it ever gone before the public? And have any decisions been made about that relief fund?
Courtney, can you answer that best you can, please? You're muted, Courtney.
Let's see if that's better.
There you go.
We don't generally respond to public comment, but at your request, I will let you know that the amount of ARPA funds that Ms. Grabow is concerned about don't actually exist. There aren't the amount of funds that she believes there are, and the first half of those funds should be available. The second half probably won't be available until after July of next year.
May I ask when they will become available?
I think she answered after July of next year, the second.
But that's the second half, the first half, when would the first half become available?
That is the that which we already worked through funding.
In in regard to the city office building, is that what you're referring to?
Courtney, can you help me with the names? Because we have Esser Funds or one version of it. We have various funds that came through COVID monies.
So the ARPA funds are different than the CARES funds, and there are what we call Bucket A, Bucket B, and Bucket C monies. Most of those monies are for infrastructure projects, and those can be funded in whole or in part with the ARPA funds. We are working with grant writers as well as our Public Works Director and other department heads to see what projects we can fund fully. In the first rounds of funding for some of the grants, we were just outside of the the limit for the $150 million, but everybody got $2 million in that round of funding. And because some of those projects were 10 times that amount in request, they may or may not fund the decide to accept the funds that were provided in in that round. So that will probably lead to another round of funding, and so we're still waiting on that.
I know there's often a lot. So Patricia, this I did have her answer those questions. But during public comment, we generally don't have back and forth banter. So if you have questions, you can ask them during that. I think she clarified what how funds are and where where potential for funds will come.
This year, the City Commission applied for $3.5 million of COVID relief funds specifically. And I would like to comment that I would certainly like to see and will certainly do a public information kind of comment for that specific grant that was written. And the chairman signed the application for that grant for the 3.5 million. I I really would so appreciate it if the city would be forthright in the way they they allow the public to know the COVID monies, when the COVID money comes available, the applications that go into the COVID monies, like the one that was done in July, and and what course of action the city takes, because I believe that's public information, and the public has a right to say what happens to this money, or to at least give some sort of income, or at the very least, to know that it exists. So I will follow through on this, but I I feel like that is the most basic right of the citizens of this community. Thank you.
All right, any other public comment? Just double checking, and oh, you can also do the emoji, the hand emoji, if you would like to speak. Okay. Moving on tonight, we have three consent items, consent items A, B, and C. Do we have the motion from the commission on consent items A, B, and C, or any that you would like pulled for consideration?
I move we accept consent items A, B, and C.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second, Darrell, did we lose?
I just noticed, where did Quentin go?
And where's Mel also?
Mel is right there. He has the headset, or he he's right there with a headset, but with Riley. I think she's trying to get the.
Oh, okay. I didn't see his hand. I see his hand now.
And Riley, we can see you. I think as far as the mute button, can you turn it off for Courtney from your end or no? Sometimes we can do that.
Let me try. I think the answer is no, but I will try.
Okay. And then what happened to Quentin? I don't know if he's here somewhere. Oh, there you are.
I'm back. I got kicked off.
Okay.
Somehow.
Whenever you're in your shop, you struggle.
Well, now with this computer, I haven't, but.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's move on. So I had a emotion by maybe in a second by Newt's roll call, please.
Chair Hoagland.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Friedman. Commissioner, maybe.
Mel. And Mel, can you raise your hand? And thank you.
He's not visible on the screen, just saying, no.
Okay.
Commissioner News.
Yes.
Okay. So we're having some technical difficulty. Mel, if you can call Courtney for some advice, we could help. Usually it's Faith, but since it's Courtney tonight, we'll help the best we can. All right. So motion passes. I didn't say that. So tonight, we don't have any proclamations or scheduled public comments, or public hearings, or ordinances, or resolutions. We do have three action items. Our first action item is to discuss the board communications. So Courtney, can you start with that? And then we'll we'll elaborate a little more and start a conversation.
Certainly. There was some concern about some of the communications that were being had by board members outside of board meetings, and that board communications comported both with the city's policy for boards, as well as the ethical considerations required by the state of Montana. This was a conversation that was started probably about two months ago, and we have continued to have that conversation. Certainly, the city manager under the city code is in charge of boards, and that the commission appoints the board members generally. The communication has been improved, I would say, to some extent over the past couple of months, as people have gone back and read their board handbook, and I think understand better what the expectations are for our communication, public meetings, notices, making sure that everybody's right to be heard is preserved in the public, and that people who are coming into board meetings who are on the board, those board members are disclosing communications that they have had with people in the public, so that those people who have communicated to board members about board issues have the opportunity to their views be heard, even though it is through a board member, if they cannot be present, and that the board members understand the disclosure requirements.
Thank you for that description of some of the history of why this was put on. So I guess I would like to state for the other commissioners, I had asked to have this on, but I really still feel like there needs to be a conversation with Michael involved. And I have stated that to Courtney as well. And so the reason that I put it on is there was concerns from board members that the communication that was sent on August 31st. Yes. Sort of ties the the hands of some of the boards and some and doesn't line up to their bylaws. And so there's a fine line, of course, and in what Courtney was saying, and what and what we can do for our boards can do according to requirements by the state or MC A, you know, our our laws, Montana laws, and then as well as what we have for the city manager form of government, as well as what we do in as a commission. So there's, you know, real roles and responsibilities for each, and there's rights that are requirements that come to add us, but the concern being brought to me was that it it isn't following really the the or the letter of this recommendation, this letter was not, and it's included in your packet, is not really in or following some of the bylaws, as well as not really utilizing the boards to the best of their ability. That is why I brought it to the commission, and I still would like to have this conversation to continue. I am concerned because I know board members have are have quit. And that concerns me that our boards, which are one of the most valuable groups of people for us as a commission, in my opinion, maybe quitting because of the conflicts between their roles and responsibilities, and then the the sense of like really, how can they do their job effectively? So I wanted to lay it out as to why we have that on to on the agenda tonight, and want to just hear from you from the commission as far as if you're willing to move this forward, or if you have any thoughts or questions.
Madam Chair. Hi. I have a question about where what is the conflict? Or what is the motivation for a board member to leave the board? I mean, specifically.
From what I am being told is that there's some like the conflict between the clarifying board communications document and the the expectations that are put in, you know, are stated in there are in conflict with bylaws and with boards roles and responsibilities that that they've had in the past. So trying to find that place, a middle ground that, you know, I always like to find where we can say, oh, this is the right, or these are the roles and responsibilities according to Montana code, according to following, like Courtney was saying, following the requirements that boards have, and then also them still having a bit of autonomy so that they can do the work they need to do. That's where I would say I'm hearing the conflict is, and it was brought to me by a different number of people.
Thank you.
Yep. Did that help, Warren?
To a degree, yes. I mean, I I've read the I've read the directions or the instructions in the communication process, lines of communication, and I'm not aware of what is in their handbook or whatever.
Bylaws.
Their bylaws that conflicts with that. That's that's where I'm with. That's where I have a gap.
Yeah.
I understand the problem. That's that's what I didn't before. So thank you.
And I think that if when Michael is available to meet, I would like to address this more fully, and that's what I'm asking of the commission. If you all see a need to address this more fully or in the future, or if, you know, I'm only one.
Madam Chair.
Here, I don't make every decision.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you. If nothing else, I'd like to have a work session on this. And this also falls in line with the board training as well. And and specific boards have, you know, specific you know, guidelines and stuff like that. Planning is one, and zoning is another that I'm aware of, but yeah, I, yes, a little more. I'd like to have a little more in-depth discussion and the back and forth on this with the city manager. I don't at this time, I don't think kind of a waste of time to mess around with this at this point, but I would like to have that discussion. I agree with you. I yield.
Thank you, Quentin. Melissa.
Thanks, Chair Hoagland. So first of all, I just want to recognize that you had suggested we push this forward agenda since the city manager wasn't at the last meeting that this was on, and he's not present at this one as well. So I agree also that it's important to have that conversation with him. I also want to piggyback on something you said. I also have gotten a lot of feedback from board members, and I want to be clear that it's many boards, not just one particular board that I've gotten feedback from in particular about this letter. So just to be clear, I think there's there's some things happening across boards. It's not just one board specific, to my understanding. And also, I wanted to I want to recognize that we have a right to protect people's personal information, like there's some HR concerns that I have about what's the best place to have a meeting about this letter, because our board members also have rights, and I maybe ask Lisa if she's on, like, is this conversation better for a is this better for like a commission meeting, or should we be having this conversation in executive sessions, since it kind of is maybe getting into personnel if we're starting to talk about certain specific conflicts? I don't know the answer, and I don't. So I'm just throwing that out there, Chair Hoagland, and I yield.
Yeah, and I do know, and please answer that, Courtney, and I have a little bit on that. When board members have brought it to me, they really want to be heard. And so that by having it in the public forum, you know, that's where we have to have that, and that's why we do what we do, you know, to keep it in the public. A work session is public as well. It can be, and unless, of course, we have a legal responsibility somewhere in it. But what do you think, Courtney?
Well, I would say that if the board members want to have a public discussion about their participation, that they have to some extent, a right to do that, and that Lisa may want to reach out privately to some of them, and I know that she may be doing that. And I'll let her speak to that individually.
We we have spoken with several board members about some of their concerns. Some of these matters, if they if they rise to some sort of misconduct or something like that, then then yes, I would say there is a right of privacy there from an HR perspective. If we're just going to have a discussion over kind of the mechanics of this document and how communication between board members and subsequently staff and potentially the commission are handled, that is certainly there for an open session. But if we're going to get into something really, really specific around a certain incident, and there are rights of privacy involved, I would say that that may be appropriate for an executive session.
Great, thank you. So this could be combined, you know, in to approach two different ways at some point. So I appreciate that feedback. So moving it forward, it sounds like two other commissioners are okay and support uh, that move. And like I said at the beginning, my concern is that our boards are extremely valuable to our city and to the work we do as a commission and the work the city employees do. And I want to really value the importance of them and their voice and concerns, and also value the roles and responsibilities of the city. All right, moving it forward, then. Let's move on to our next agenda item. Sorry, I'm flipping pages. Next, we're going to schedule a strategic plan and growth policy priority funding meeting. Priorities funding meeting. Courtney.
When is everybody available? We had an initial meeting set up for this for the 14th of October, and that meeting needed to go away for various reasons. We need to reschedule. What is the commission's preference as far as date and time, and we can get that reset?
Can I ask a question? What's the block of time we're looking at? How long would this meeting be?
I would say it could be anywhere from an hour and a half to three hours, and we can do that at your discretion. We can always start with a shorter amount of time and then add to that with an additional meeting down the road.
Thank you. And Melissa, just from in the past, the strategic planning or updating the strategic plan and talking through, you know, aligning goals with city or community goals, and now with our growth policy, I mean, that could take, you know, two hours in itself. And we have spent quite a few hours on that, and then the and the priorities, tying those priorities of you know, funding, really, funding and what and time that we put into it could take hours as well, you know? So I I think it does need to be probably a three-hour meeting, or we could split it up. What do you think?
Certainly, if we set it for three hours and we don't end up using it all, there's nothing wrong with that. So if we can find a day that you guys are all available, we can certainly try to make that happen.
Okay.
I'm hoping for that. I agree.
Okay, so as far as days. I mean, we often choose days like, you know, a Tuesday and continue. I could do a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday coming up in the next three weeks, depending, a few of those are not available, but those tend to be the days we choose. What do you guys think?
My dance starts open. I'm ready.
We have a commission.
Not available on any of those days.
I have many days not available, but I do have next Tuesday available, if you wanted to do Tuesday evening, like, see how far we get. And then consider scheduling another.
I do have a, that's the one night really that I have a meeting. And then, of course, we have Thanksgiving coming up, so we're sort of getting that last week I just referenced is tight, but I do have a meeting. I have a board meeting on the ninth.
My Wednesday and Thursday nights I work that week.
How about a Monday?
Do you want to go as soon as the eighth?
I think that might be a little soon.
Too soon? Okay.
Probably be the safer the 15th to 22nd to the 29th. Well, might have everybody in a carb coma on the 29th.
What did you say, Courtney?
So there might be a fair amount of carb coma on the 29th, which is the month after Thanksgiving.
That's true. It might be good.
The day of Hanukkah. That's for Hanukkah, anyway.
Are people available on the 15th?
Yeah, I'm available 15th.
Yeah, makes for a long week because we have commission as well, just to.
Well, maybe we could limit it and not go really late and just commit to having to meet more than once, rather than doing lots of late meetings, because it's a lot for staff and commissioners and the public.
I think that's a good idea, because then we do have, you know, five Tuesdays. So we do have like the 30th, and we could do it a long one, or we did split it between the 15th and the 30th, maybe. And have it split. So hour and a half for the first one, more of like here's what we're working on, and, you know, the aligning of the growth policy and the strategic plan and getting it started, and, you know, our thoughts all out there, or at least kind of organized, and then moving it to more of a more concrete plan on the second meeting.
Sure.
Can we just, can we lock those in before anything else fills up those time slots, the 15th and 30th? Okay.
I'm good with it.
You got it.
Beginning at 5:00, 5:30?
Yep, usually 5:30 works for work the people with the the different day jobs.
5:30?
Yep.
Good.
And do you want that for an hour and a half or two hours?
Hour and a half, I believe, right?
Yeah. Finish it at three hours total.
Yeah.
I think that's reasonable. Thoughtful of people's time as well. Okay.
All right.
And then will we get like some sort of staff report or something in advance of that? Just just to make the use of time more efficient when we're in person, if we have some, we can get up to speed in advance.
I think we can come up with something. I think you had it largely before we were ready for the 14th meeting, which didn't happen, which include the the strategic plan and some additional documents. So I don't think anything's changed, but if you have any specific requests, please let us know.
And then I know that we had the organizational strategic plan document was left in, I think, hard copies were left in our box at at the at the city county or city building. And so you should have that. But we, you know, sending them forward in a, in a mass document is a lot easier for us to kind of look at the whole picture. So having that sent us, Courtney, would be great. And, you know, forward what we started last time before it was canceled.
And that's okay in electronic form.
I'd like it printed, actually, if we can get hard copies personally.
Yeah, I would do both, definitely, because it's good to do a compare and contrast sometimes for people. And these are all on our website for the public, so they can reference them. All right. Okay. Thanks for planning.
Excuse me. Finalized?
Fifteenth and the thirtieth at five thirty.
Thank you.
Hour and a half each time. Okay, then we're going to move on to the third discussion item first to discuss approved deny pursuing a city county planning board or expanded city planning board. Courtney.
So I'm going to share my screen here. So this is a staff report that has been prepared. Several meetings ago, you asked us to go out and see, well, first of all, present you with the options and then see what the interest was from the county. And then bring those back to you with a request for recommendation going forward. And Matthew has done that. He has laid out the, the law and the options in the last meeting. And now, based on this memorandum, as well as Matthew's report, you may elect to make a decision about how you'd like to proceed. Matthew?
Matthew's muted.
I see that. I think we got it.
No, no, he's not.
There you go.
I don't really have much to add to that. I did reach out to the county and to county planning to see if they had a preference or a recommendation for you all, and they did not make one. Otherwise, you have the memo that was provided that Courtney just showed you and the information from the presentation last week, or two weeks ago, I should say. Otherwise, I'm just here to answer questions.
Okay, Matthew, would you say that again? So we reached out to the county commission, county planning board.
County planning department.
Planning department, planning, has their planning board discussed uh, this issue at all? Their planning board?
The planning board has not been asked for input on this specific commission decision. The city planning board and the county planning board did have a joint meeting a couple of months ago to sort of just lay out the process and the options. But they were not specifically asked for comment on this.
Okay. Um, well, let's open this to public, unless there's any clarifying questions from the commission. Any? Okay. Is there any public comment on action item C?
Jonathan Hedinger, two, 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 Willow Drive. I just wanted to make a comment that I really appreciate the city commission's recent decision to allow non-free holders on the planning board. And I just want to make sure that non-free holders continue to have a voice going forward. And whatever you choose, I think that that should be a priority to make sure all members of the community are able to have their voice heard. So thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. I definitely have a question on that, Courtney, and then when we're done with public comment. Other questions or comments from the public?
Yes, I have a, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Patricia Graybo, two oh four East Callender, Livingston. I think it's imperative that the county planning board meet on this issue and that the county planning board at least and be, and as well as the staff be involved in any preliminary discussions before this comes up, before the city commission. It it is, it involves a partnership that I think would be damaging to the partnership should the city just move ahead unilaterally on this. So I, just a comment that it seems like this is also something that the new commission would more appropriately take up. And it gives time for the county planning board to formulate some of their thoughts and some of their ideas on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
You have a hand up?
Yep. Is it Rita?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just was wondering what issues this ward would be looking at in general. I know that some neighbors are not sure of of what that would include and how that might affect people in the outside of the city.
Rita, could you give us your address, please?
Yes, sorry, thirty nine Billman Lane, Livingston.
Courtney, can you write down Rita's question? I think that is a question we've, I, I think other commissioners might have on their list, too, is just the, a bit of the history, and then if you could add that in after the questions are all laid out. And then as well as what is different or the same. I see in the document, it's semi-clear, but it's not extremely clear, right, as to what people's concerns or, or support for this. So if we, you could help with that? Did I clarify that enough? Okay, Rita, do you have anything else? And she'll answer after there's more from public. Okay, thank you. All right, any other public comment? I have to scroll through. I don't see any other public comment. Last call. Okay, let's move it on to commissioner conversation and questions. And then if Courtney could, and I think Matthew, if you could help a little bit with that, too. I know in the past, we've had a, a, a city county planning board, and then it moved away from that. I don't remember the years that that happened, but some history on it and as far as what changes or stays the same for and how that impacts the, the planning board in general. Courtney, can you answer those first? And then we'll have, I'm sure, other commissioners?
I will. And then Matthew can chime in if he thinks I missed anything, or if he wants to expound on anything. So I'm not entirely familiar with what the city county planning board may have acted on when there was a city county planning board in the past. But currently, there's a county planning board and a city planning board. Hang on, sorry. Sorry, set a timer. The county planning board has been involved largely through our planning staff and through their planning staff. At least for the better part of the last year, I would, I would say, as we've looked at whether or not we're going to explore this and how we're going to explore it. As you all are probably aware, if you have seen Facebook posts or the newspaper, the county planning board has been dealing with a fair amount of public opposition to their proposed conflict mitigation zoning. And my perception is at this point that the, the county planning board and the county in general are not going to move towards a city county planning board. I think Matthew has done a good job exploring that with them. And at this point, I think they're just waiting to see what we do. Which is a fair position to be in. Really, the extraterritorial zoning benefits the city as well as the county in those areas. And there are areas that we can zone and areas that we can't. In places where there is already zoning, we don't have the ability to zone. Those are immediately adjacent to eighty-nine south, going down into the valley. And I believe it's about three quarters of a mile on either side of the center of the roadway. And then there's a small pocket of zoning that's up by Cokedale that doesn't really affect us because it's far enough out. The general reason for doing this is to limit more and more of what's the county becoming urban density because of where the edges of the county are and trying to put some limit on that. Certainly, we want to limit annexations to a certain point so that we don't have to bring city services out any farther than the commission has identified and, and the planning board and growth policy have identified as places for growth and to allow some zoning overlay in those areas to to meet those ends as the, as the commission sees fit.
All right, thank you. That, that's helpful information. Matthew, is there anything else to add? I know Courtney had said that the commission or the county is not as interested now in, as I think there was conversations that we're moving towards that. Is that what I'm hearing? And then it's sort of reached a bit to a halt. Do you have any thoughts?
I don't think we've had any indication from the county commission which way they'd like to go. Basically, this request, you know, there was a public comment about asking the county planning board. We have not asked the county planning board, nor have we asked the city planning board. It's not in either of their jurisdictions. It's in your jurisdiction. If you were to move forward with the city county planning board, we'd have to sign an interlocal agreement with the county, which means the county commission would have to approve the creation of the city county plan. Historically, there was a city county planning board. It's kind of a complicated story, but basically it was dissolved after some disagreements between the city and the county. And I believe the county basically pulled out of that board, so the board was dissolved. Now, that was fifteen years ago or so, maybe a little bit longer. So there was one in the past. There was also zoning in what we're calling the donut extraterritorial jurisdiction in the past. Really, the jurisdiction of planning boards under state law is to make recommendations on subdivision applications and on plans. Obviously, you've seen the planning side of things with, with the growth policy. We don't see as many subdivisions in the, in the city, but if we were to have a subdivision application, there would be a recommendation from the planning board that went along. If we were to set up either of these boards, the intent, and it's been made very clear by staff, and it's very clear in the growth policy, the intent of the board is to allow us to zone extraterritorial jurisdiction, basically as Courtney said, as a growth management technique. Without either of these boards, we don't have authority under state law to, to do that. If we were to adopt these boards, we do have that authority. We don't have the authority to do subdivision review in the extraterritorial jurisdiction because county has subdivision regulations. Though with a city county planning board and the interlocal agreement, some of these things could be negotiated. I don't think that would be one of the things that would be negotiated. Obviously, the details with the city county planning board in, and that interlocal agreement would be, would be discussed if we were to move in that direction. There is a specific list of things in state law that you have to include in that interlocal agreement, but that's, you could include more if you wanted to. That would be a discussion between the city and the county at that point. And then it would have to be approved by both commissions, and that would basically set up the city county planning. If we were to set up a city county planning board, it would dissolve the city planning board as we wouldn't have want to have overlapping jurisdictions between two city planning boards. It would not dissolve the county planning board. The county planning board would still have jurisdiction outside of extraterritorial jurisdiction. So it doesn't change anything for those county residents that live outside of that two mile buffer around the city. It would change potential planning board jurisdictions or subdivision review and planning for that two mile buffer. The city county planning board could also act as a zoning commission, kind of like our city zoning commission currently does, which means there may be a new body that acts as the zoning recommending body for that area. This expanded city planning board does not have that jurisdiction under state law, which means our current city zoning commission would have to remain the zoning recommender body for that area. So it does affect those residents living in the ETJ in that they are subject, if we were to adopt zoning, they are subject to decisions that are made by the city commission. And again, as Courtney said, we can't, the county has final authority on zoning. So if the county adopts or has adopted zoning in specific areas or for the whole extraterritorial jurisdiction, we cannot adopt zoning in that area. So, for example, if the county were to adopt their conflict mitigation zoning and it covered the whole county, we would no longer be able to zone that area. So the county does have more authority than us in that area, as it is, does remain in the county. And we've heard a lot from the public about the desire for the city to annex that whole area. There's no desire, and I don't think any ability for the city to annex that whole area. So I don't want there to be concerns about that, come up with this. This is really just the first step in fulfilling the growth policies recommendation of zoning extraterritorial jurisdiction. There will be several steps after this. If it were just to be an expanded city planning board, we would basically do what we did to allow non-free holders on the planning board, which brings you a resolution expanding the, the city planning board. I should note that the city county planning board cannot have non-free holders on it under state law, must all be free holders. So the only way to have a board which has non-free holders on it is an expanded city planning. And there's not an option for city county planning board. If we were to go down the city county planning board route, the next step would be to work with the county on formulating an interlocal agreement and bringing that both to you and the county commission. If the county commission, commission are going to, to reject that interlocal agreement, staff would very likely come back to you with a request to expand the city plans or to allow us to fulfill the goals of the growth policy. Hopefully, that has answered the questions, but I can answer any other questions you have.
Thank you. Very helpful. And Courtney, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any comments, questions?
I, Madam Chair, I
Go ahead.
I did, up until just now, I think Matthew has answered.
Did Quentin freeze, or is he thinking?
I don't know. I was giving him a second, second to pull his thoughts together, but it looks like it, it's too long. Quentin, you're frozen. Okay, how about someone else?
He's, he's back and he's talking, but he's muted.
Oh, somehow, somehow I got muted.
There you are.
Anyway, it doesn't seem like there's an appetite for a city county planning board from the county side. So expanding the city planning board sounds like a reasonable option to me. I yield.
Thank you, Quentin. Go ahead, Melissa.
Thanks, Chair Oakland. I, so my biggest, I guess my most important comment about this action item is that action item B on our agenda tonight is to prioritize the growth policy topics, which we just scheduled meetings for. Moving forward with changing the board is automatically prioritizing the ETJ. I am not sure that the ETJ will fall out at number one on our list of priorities with the growth policy. Based on the meetings, all the planning board meetings we have, I can think of a good handful of topics that might be the most important. And I'm not sure that the ETJ would fall on the top. So I, I'm interested in tabling this till after we have conversations about prioritizing growth policy topics personally. Because I think moving forward with this is like saying this is the number one thing on the list, and I'm not sure that it is. And it will take resources and time to change the board.
Thank you, Melissa. Warren. Mel, I'm not sure if Mel.
Emma, do you hear me?
Yep, we hear you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I think that waiting for the, the outcome of the meetings in terms of setting priorities would, would be a good pass.
I'll jump on board and agree with, with what Melissa said on. I actually meant to ask what our planning board thinks right now. Specifically, I mean, it's just adding a lot more work for them at this point. So I agree, Melissa.
All right, thank you, Warren and Quentin. Anyone else? I think I'd agree. I don't feel like this is something we should be pursuing at this moment, especially because we need to do the other work to see where the priorities are, like Melissa is stating. Also, I do have that, the concern of the freeholder requirement. We put the free, the non-free holder part of the planning board or the, the participant onto the planning board for a reason. And it worries me to root, or to lose that. And I would hate to see that ha- happen after the I mean, the importance that we put on that as a commission as well as a community. All right, so at this time, does anyone have any thoughts on how we move forward?
Make a motion to table.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion to table by Newt and a second by, I think it was Mel, kind of came in and out. Roll call, please.
You muted, Courtney.
Chair Hoagland.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Friedman.
Or.
Commissioner, maybe.
Yes.
Commissioner Newt.
Or.
All right.
Right, motion passes to table. Action item. One last thing on that. I thought, I sort of expected more public comment on that. I just rips me out. Sometimes you think that things that are super important that have come at you and then we get to a meeting and no one says anything hardly. All right, we're moving on. We have city manager comments and we're almost done in our comments.
I am gonna go out on a limb and say that one of the things that our city manager would want you to know, and I'm gonna share my screen here real quick. Is that our finance department was awarded a letter of excellence for its financial reporting for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty. This certi- certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting is the highest form of recognition in government accounting and financial reporting. And its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government in its management. It looks like there's going to be a, a award that will be sent out and we will try to follow up with a formal presentation of the certificate award in a subsequent public meeting and hopefully do a press release at that point.
Great, great. Thank you. Good news. Good to hear. Anything else, Courtney?
No, we did get a copy of the award for inclusion and diversity. And so if anybody wants to stop in and get a copy of that, they certainly can. It's in the latest edition of the ICM magazine.
Great. Thank you. Great, Melissa.
What's the ICM magazine? What's that acronym stand for, Courtney?
It is Public Management and International City Managers Association.
Thank you. Congratulations to Paige. Please extend the congratulations from the commission to Paige. That's wonderful. And I want to just point out that today's election day, so anybody that has a pile of mail on a table in your house and you haven't turned in your ballot yet, there's still time. You can turn it in until eight PM to the city-county building on calendar. So please vote. It's so important. If you haven't voted yet, go turn it in. There's still time. That is my comment for tonight. Thanks, everyone.
All right, thank you, Melissa. Next, Warren.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate the finance department also, but sometimes the highest compliment is silence. Lack of complaints. Lack of griping. And overall, and, and I know nothing runs perfectly, but overall, I'd like to congratulate all of the city departments for keeping things running smoothly. And and finance is just the one that's standing out now with the recognition, but they're pretty much all in the same boat. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Mel.
Yeah, I want to give you an after-action report on Halloween. Generally, we live on South Yellowstone. We closed down. I was very heartwarming to see the fact that we didn't close the street down. But we had absolutely no traffic coming in at all. Tremendous amount of people all night long. We went through about four bags of candy. There was only one mishap at the very end and I happened, I think Riley was outside, I was inside. A couple of young fellows on motorcycles tried to be a little cute. And Riley came running in the house and we called the police department and evidently somebody with a cell phone called the police department and they were on it real quick. And I don't know what the aftermath is, but the behavior of everybody and the little, and what I'm looking at, Darrell, is the little kids that I, I never saw so many in my life, like a three-to-four-year, five-year-old. The only thing we don't know is that these people part of Livingston or where do they do live, but they, they were very good and it was all night long. It was chilly outside, but everything moved along at a good manner. So I want to really thank people for behaving on that particular night. It was, I think it went off pretty well. I yield.
Thank you, Mel, and thanks for your yearly Yellowstone update.
Yep.
All right, Quentin.
Hey, I got to hand out candy this year on Yellowstone. Yeah, and it was fun. And it was fun to see a lot of little kids and stuff. And the weather was, I might say, perfect. The only thing I have, have to say is good luck to everybody who's running for city commission. And yes, there is still time to vote. I yield.
Thank you, Quentin. I have just a couple of things that have been brought to me. Or one in particular, I had a call from a as she called herself, an elderly person. I don't usually use that word, but that's what she said. And she is wondering what the city can do. I did clarify a few statements, but what the city can do to help bring in a store or support a store that has more access to you know, goods, you know, dry goods, daily needs, you know, everything from socks to underwear to, to reasonably priced items that you need for just a house and living. And she was wondering what the city could do to help that. I think there, she, she had said, my perception is, is that the city is stopping that kind of store from coming in and we said we don't, or I said, we don't stop businesses from coming in. We sometimes have to regulate them in relationship to some zoning or, or to planning, but we don't stop businesses from happening. But she was asking for for us as a city to consider what can we do to help bring in the store that can help people like her who don't want to ha- go over the hill to get basics for their, their home and life. So also, I heard a statement tonight and I always like to address statements. I hope that the commission agrees with me that this is not a lame duck session for the next two months and that we'll continue to do our work and/or that we don't just wait for the next commission to make decisions, because if we did, a lot would go by without the work being done. And we'll continue to work until the end. My last one is, in this wicked thing called COVID, please choose kindness and don't forget that as a community, we have been that type of community where we are kind and thoughtful. And that this is really, Livingston is not a true reflection of who we are as a, as a, as a community. That's all for me. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Show mood.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at six thirty-five.
Chair Hoagland, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Did this lady that you talked to have a location? I'm wondering about Jay Grace Corner Store versus wherever she might be and, and it being more convenient.
Yes, I did mention Grace to her. But I think she, and also, and I forgot this, she did reference and I forgot to write this part down, but even wanting a dollar store, something that, that was affordable. And she said Grace is great, but it's not quite enough.
Okay.
You know, more like a mini Target, you know, mini Walmart, you know, something that can help with that bigger picture of the, the needs.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thanks, Courtney, for pulling the meeting off.
You bet.
Goodbye.